Is Kyle who I'm not seeing here?
Ah.
I don't think I see Kyle.
Thirteen participants, but I don't see him yet.
Hey Deborah.
Yeah.
Do you know what that light that you got over your head, it looks like you're wearing a little Chinese hat.
I know, that's what, that's what, that's what we were laughing at earlier. Sometimes I move over here so you can see it's a lamp, but it's not my hat. Well, so do we start without Kyle? I don't know. I'm kind of lost now. I don't know what to do.
I think he'll be joining. I'll give him a minute.
Okay. Um, Karen, do you know, um, are we supposed to pull item five and talk about the replacement or is it?
Yeah, on the consent calendar?
Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Ah, Kyle is connecting. There you go. Right. Hi Kyle.
My apologies, I had to restart my computer.
Oh, it's okay. Ready to go or?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Call to order, the regular virtual meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call please.
Mayor Garance.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
City Manager Knob.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham.
I see her.
She must be muted.
She's muted.
Okay, okay. Community Development, thank you. Community Development Director Caldwell. Water Superintendent Jensen.
I'm here.
Wastewater Superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And City Clerk Dunn, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, ceremonial matters. Proclamation in support of the Great American Smokeout. Page one in your packet is Jay McCubrey. Are you here Jay? They call you Dr. McCubrey, PhD. Well.
He, I believe he is attending as well as Savannah Youth, a member of the, like teenager, they were both going too.
Okay. Um, then I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation and recognition of the Great American Smokeout, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit tobacco for at least one day. And whereas each year nearly three, thirty-four thousand California adults die from smoking and twenty thousand three hundred kids become new daily smokers. And whereas flavored tobacco products make smoking and vaping electronic cigarettes attractive to youth and harder to quit. And whereas there are nearly four million adult smokers in California, but only three point one percent used electronic cigarettes. And whereas more than eighty-four percent of high school smokers used electronic cigarettes, almost all of which were flavored. And whereas electronic cigarettes create hazardous waste in the form of plastics, semiconductors, heavy metals, and lithium ion batteries for which there is no established disposal or recovery procedure. And whereas on Saturday, November thirteenth, there will be an Escape the Vape event on the Arcata Plaza between ten and one, ten AM and one PM, where folks can safely dispose of electronic smoking devices and learn how to quit for good. Now, therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Riedel hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking in one day. Just start with day one. Thank you for being present to accept the proclamation. And that is signed by myself, Deborah L. Garance, Mayor, City of Riedel. And would Dr. McCubrey or any representative present like to speak?
Um, it's kind of weird. I'm watching two meetings, uh, I'm listening to one meeting and, and watching another one on the YouTube channel.
Done.
But, um, yes, my name is Jay McCubrey and I, I have a PhD. I'm Project Director of the Tobacco Free North Coast Program. And I thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for reading the proclamation tonight. There's probably no, no more important time for people to be aware of resources like novape.org to help people quit smoking, especially now that there are upwards of fifteen thousand different fruit and sweet and candy flavors of electronic smoking products or vapes. And these are what kids are gravitating for. The Surgeon General has declared youth vaping a national epidemic. And we are not free from that here in Humboldt County. If you check out Tobacco Free North Coast on the web, you can learn more about tobacco retail licensing policies that are evidence-based practices to prevent nicotine addiction among kids. And tonight, if we can get Savannah on the line, I'd like her to just say a little bit from the perspective of a high school student, those people that are most impacted by this vaping epidemic and policies to prevent it.
Thank you Savannah. Are you there? Welcome. Thank you for coming on to our Zoom meeting.
Am I muted?
Yeah, yes.
Alrighty, just wanted to make sure. Hi, my name's Savannah. I'm seventeen. I go to Academy of the Redwoods. Um, I just wanted to briefly talk about the fact that smoking and vaping, they honestly affect everybody I come in contact with on a daily. There's the people who smoke and vape themselves. There's people who are around it and have to deal with the secondhand smoke. It honestly, it just causes problems throughout everybody's life. There's the fact that it's very pricey, which causes monetary problems in people's lives. It excludes people from activities because, you know, they would rather smoke than hang out with friends. And it can cause people to be ostracized from their life and their childhood. Not only that, but it'll follow them into adulthood. It, it would just be nicer to see some more like solutions for these things, like more tobacco education in like schools and communities and things, as well as like making them less accessible, accessible and more, um, more enforcement on the, um, reduction of youth using them. As well as just more resources for people to quit or to feel the need to quit. Um, that's about all I have for today. Uh, thank you guys for having me.
Thank you so much Savannah, very well stated. And thank you for being here. We appreciate your input and your perspective because we're talking about, in this moment, your, your age group. And it is really helpful for us to hear from you. So thank you for being here.
Of course.
Thank you, Dr. Mulberry.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
McCubrey, I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
Mulberry, you know, McCubrey, McGarretty, whatever.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for being here. And now, oh, and there was someone on with the hand raised and says Doe. They're muted, but their hand is raised. Should, um, I'm not in control of that, so.
They haven't muted on their end, I can't unmute it.
Okay, they're unmuted now. Doe.
Hi there.
Hi.
Uh, yeah, that might, I'm not sure how that got there. My name's Kristi Alberti Vowles. I'm the Youth Coalition and Community Engagement Coordinator.
Oh, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Savannah, you did a fantastic job. Thanks so much. You know, as a youth coalition coordinator, I'm just really concerned about youth. I started smoking when I was a very young youth and know how important it is for young people to have different choices and to really avoid that, especially with the highly addictive vape products that are out there. Um, we've, I'm also a student of human development and brain science, and I'm very concerned about this developmental space that young people, and this opportunity for their brains to create these addictive patterns and neuropathways. And I just really appreciate people like Savannah and Jay coming out and speaking. And thank you so much, Mayor Lawrence, and City Councilmembers for having us tonight.
Thank you. Um, and this was a very worthy ceremonial matter. So thank you all for being here. And I think that is all that I see, no other hands raised. So, um, we will close that item and move on to public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with council or staff is not intended or allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently no hands raised.
And I see no emails.
Thank you. We will move slowly on, just in case, to the consent calendar. We are going to pull item five because there is a change and we will come back to that after we complete the consent calendar. Is there, is there any other item that a council member would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Yes, I'd like to remove number three.
And Mayor Garance, I would like to remove item number two.
Thank you. And so is there, um, a motion to accept items one, four, five, and six?
Not five, just six, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. One, four, and six.
Doe moved by Carter.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, we will, um, the motion carries five zero. We will go to now to item number two, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Uh, I was absent from that meeting and I think we need to have a vote on that, just reflecting my absence. Thank you.
You're welcome. So is there a motion to approve item two with Mayor Pro Tim abstaining?
Doe moved, Woodall.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second, Carter.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I only heard one aye. I'm paying attention. Okay, um, and all opposed, nay. Hearing none, item two of consent calendar is approved. Item number three, Councilmember Woodall.
Yes, um, I think it's time to go back to meetings and, um, I think when we're at the regular meetings in person, that there's way better communications. We also have the hybrid set up now to where people can also use the hybrid decision to call in. And, um, and right before the meeting tonight, I was surprised Governor Newsom was on TV and he was saying that we're either the first or second in the nation with the lowest number of new cases. And he says we're doing really well. And I think it's time for us to go back to, um, regular meetings.
Thank you. And, um, and I will just say, um, in response to that, just not, not about going back and forth, but just that California is, that's a, that is a fact. But the other fact is Humboldt County is actually in the high end. And, um, and this was simply just, I'm gonna say, what's today is Tuesday, so Sunday, I think. Um, Southern Eureka, Fortuna, Riedel, Carlotta, and Hydesville were the highest in all of Humboldt County. So I hear you, but at the same time, we are, we are actually listed by the Health Department as one of the highest cities in this county. So just, that's just information. Yes, Riedel, Southern, Southern Eureka, Fortuna, Riedel, called out by name and zip code, Hydesville, and Carlotta. So just when we're all talking about it, just that's a consideration. Just putting it out.
Okay, so, so when they say the highest, we could, um, what are they talking about? Do you know the numbers?
They're talking about reported new cases. They're talking about cases that are being reported on a daily, on, in a daily manner, um, from what I read, is, is, that's, that's what I read. So that's all I can tell you. I didn't do deep research.
Watching, watching the news tonight, there weren't many new cases at all for the, for Humboldt County. I think there was, um, there were a small number of new cases. There aren't any, um, there's, there was one new hospitalization. So I would wonder what the highest is, and is that really high?
Um, I've got it. I'm gonna pipe in. The, what I read said that there have been sixty percent more cases and the zip codes listed, uh, forty-eight percent increase in hospitalizations and twenty, twenty-eight percent increase in deaths in the, they actually removed Southern Eureka. And now they're just calling it the Greater Fortuna Area, Scotia, Hydesville, Carlotta. I can see both sides of the argument. I can, you know, six to one, half a dozen for me. But that's, that's the numbers that the county health department has published.
So, so how do we, I mean, is this, um, so then this actually falls then to Kyle to tell, to tell me how it isn't on the agenda to vote on this? It's on the agenda to come back to it? So what do, um, what am I supposed to, how am I supposed to go about this?
Well, Karen can correct me if I'm wrong. It is an action item on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, so in order to continue, uh, to hold the meetings virtually, the res, this resolution, um, would need to be passed, uh, tonight at this particular, uh, meeting. So, uh, without the resolution passing, I do believe we will have to go, uh, to in-person slash hybrid meetings. And that's really ultimately, this is the call, uh, call of the city council. So each, uh, member individually and then collectively in a vote, uh, as to, uh, whether you ultimately wish to, uh, stay in the virtual format, uh, for at least the, uh, the next thirty days or not. Um, my understanding is the County Board of Supervisors is going to remain, uh, in a virtual format until the first of the year. Um, I did not look to see what the other cities were, uh, were up to, uh, specific to this. But I will say, um, that we do have a, a hybrid setup. but I will say, um, that we do have a, a hybrid setup, as the council's aware that we have established, um, to facilitate those meetings. Um, and it is possible for people to, uh, to attend the meeting, whether it's staff, members of the public, and I believe even council members, um, virtually.
So then I will put this to a vote. I'm sorry, Ju, go ahead, Julie. I'm sorry.
Um, so let's say some people are more concerned, I mean, with this, so if it was a person, they could attend our meeting virtually?
Uh, correct. So, so we now have.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so we, we're, we're fully set up to do the, the hybrid meetings, uh, in the format using the OWL, uh, which was a kind of a low-cost, uh, implementation solution, uh, to the, to the issue. As, as you guys know, there are some pluses and minuses to that specific format, but we are able to do hybrid meetings.
Anybody else have any comments?
Mayor Garance, I, I've got a question or a comment.
Absolutely.
Specifically, Kyle, what, uh, what would we have to do in chamber? That would be different from our normal chamber.
Um, so I believe, uh, right now, you, we would still have to be doing the social distancing, so there would be a limited, uh, number of attendees allowed into the meeting. Um, and then at this point, my understanding is that masking would be required, uh, regardless of vaccination status.
Thank you.
Councilmember, um, I'm, go ahead, Julie.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. It's so hard to, to know when, um, so when we had our last virtual meeting like a week ago, we all did attend with masks and wore masks, so we did have one regular meeting.
Right. Well, that's true. I mean, it was 15 minutes, but yes, it was a meeting and it was in person. Councilmember Wilson, would you like to say anything?
Uh, just, if I understand it from the other boards that, uh, we do the Zoom through, we, we have to approve this every 30 days. We have to, we have to update this. And it had, and it's tied into what the Health Department recommends, and then the, then the city jumps in and says whether we do or don't. Uh, to me, the wearing the mask thing is, is more of the problem to doing it. I, you know, the social distancing, we do this at work and we don't, you know, we just, uh, I think that's one of the better processes. Is you stay, you stay your distance from people, and you don't touch a lot of things you don't need to touch, but, um, it's cumbersome, at least for me, to wear the mask all the time, like through a meeting like tonight, however long it's gonna take to wear, to wear a mask. And it's, it's harder to understand people. It's harder to breathe. It's harder to, um, whether or not we get a better turnout. I, I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't think you're gonna have more, as many, uh, big difference in who shows up to City Hall. Uh, people still can watch, which is good through the, the hybrid. Now, I'm glad that that's gonna probably remain, and people will be still better informed. At least they can, you know, either way, they can check in, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm good with, um, I'll do either one, but I, I would prefer the, another 30 days of the virtual meeting, just because of the masking. That's all I have.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Wilson. So, um, so the question then, City Manager, is actually, uh, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 1509, which then would mean that we would do another 30 days and check back in at the beginning of December? Is that what that would mean?
Correct, correct. And so really, by the time we would get to the December meeting, because typically, the second meeting, um, in December is either very light or it often is canceled. Um, the, you know, we would probably be going through the rest of the year without, uh, you know, an in-person meeting through 2021.
So, thank you. So, um, are there any public, uh, comments, hands raised, or, um, emails regarding this topic?
No hands raised for the moment.
I have no emails.
We have nothing, so I will then call for a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1509-2021, declaring the need for continued virtual meetings in accordance with AB 361.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. This one requires roll calling.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
No.
And Mayor Garance?
Yes. The motion carries three, two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will go on to item number five. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So, um, staff, uh, there has been an update since our, uh, special meeting regarding the, the energy project, and that's related to the timing of the, uh, the battery install. So as the council may recall, we have, uh, a proposed energy project, uh, here at City Hall that would install solar backup generator, uh, as well as energy storage batteries. Now, uh, the, uh, original, uh, proposal was for Tesla batteries. We have since learned that those batteries are between six and 12 months out from ordering, assuming that they're ordered, uh, immediately. So because of the, the timeline with the grant and, you know, our desire to really get this project signed, sealed, and delivered, uh, you know, without question by the end of February, early March, um, the alternative would be, uh, SunVault batteries, which are a, you know, similar, uh, technology to the, to the Tesla systems, but they are a bit more expensive. And so I did email the council, uh, the proposed, uh, different notice of award with the, uh, amended figure. And so I will try to display that on the screen now, um, if I can find it. So it's basically the same notice of award, just with a, a different figure, total figure, 222,460. Um, that, uh, of course, as the council may recall, is, uh, grant-funded through, uh, Cal OES. So, um, you know, it's not, uh, uh, you know, terribly significant difference in the, in the amount, but it is definitely more expensive. Guarantees that, uh, when this project concludes, um, we will have, uh, those batteries, and the system should be complete by the, by the end of February, early March. Um, so with, the staff is recommending that we go ahead and, um, substitute the, uh, the attached, uh, the, uh, this notice with the, uh, one attached to each other.
Thank you, um, City Manager. So I will open it up, uh, for questions. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson? Am I muted?
Or Gordon, you're muted.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
I guess, so the new price is 222? I didn't, I didn't see it in my email, but that's okay. So that's the new price versus 185. Is that correct? Did I lose sound or?
And that's, um, no, I hear you.
Okay, I didn't know if I lost. I have a weird internet connection.
Okay, no, I, we heard you. Um, and that's, um, a no-match grant, correct?
Uh, no-match, uh, grant. Uh, we do expect to have, you know, some, um, you know, uh, we will have to claim, uh, and make sure that we're able to, to, uh, bill the maximum amount. And, and because of the, uh, kind of, uh, loose and unique language for the grant, uh, you know, we can't guarantee that 100% of it would be reimbursed, but, uh, it likely will be.
Okay, thank you. And then the other, only other thing I really, I think, wanted to, um, clarify, I think for the public, is that the, um, there is a date, the, the end date of a grant where you, it's, I don't, it's called the completion date. There's a, there's a phrase that means that the day that the grant closes, that the, they want you to be completely finished from start to finish, and if you aren't, you usually have to repay the grant. So that's why this is really important and why we, um, it, it is unwise to cross our fingers and hope we could get a Tesla, um, batteries, get the Tesla batteries here. So I just wanted that to be, um, out there for the public to recognize that, um, that there is a, a deadline that we have to meet. Um, with that said, is there a motion to, or are there any hands raised or, uh, emails?
No hands raised.
And no emails.
Thank you. As there a motion to, um, approve item number five, receive and file notice of award to Haven in the amount that changed, which now is to, um, uh, award Haven Electric in the amount of $222,460. That is the change. Is there a motion?
Doe moved by Johnson.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second, Carter.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, I had a, I had a question. Is that?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
With this, by changing this award to the, whatever the number is, is the, the contractor able to supply the batteries in the timeframe that we need to, to fulfill the requirements of the grant without a match?
The contractor is confident that the, that the SunVault system can be, uh, delivered and installed by the date. Um, it was the, um, realization that the Tesla order would take between six and 12 months to, uh, to have delivery that, uh, caused the problem. So, so this should be, uh, we should have a complete project by the end of February, early March.
That's great. My, and I vote yes on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now we move on to City Manager and Staff Updates, page 23 in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the councils. Just keep this, uh, uh, update short. Um, uh, the agenda, the, uh, updates are on pages, uh, 23, um, through 26 of your packet, and staff and myself are available for any, uh, questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. To Councilmember Woodall?
Um, just a couple of questions, um, but one for the City Manager. Um, how are we doing with the economic development position that we're looking for?
So we are currently in recruitment. We have, uh, made an offer, and so we're in the process of doing a, uh, background and, uh, in the process of, uh, kind of finalizing the, uh, the offer.
Okay, thank you. And one for the wastewater superintendent. Um, I see that we're setting up for a river discharge. And my question is, um, this is supposed to be a La Niña year, and it's supposed to be especially dry. I mean, it started out well, and let's hope it continues. But have we ever had to go back to, um, discharging across the river in the middle of winter? And if, if we do, does it, um, to discharge over there, does it cost more money with pumping this over there?
Yes. Uh, for your first question, I, not since I've been here, or have I, uh, heard from previous superintendents that, you know, mid, mid-season, typically the ground gets pretty saturated, so any amount of rain would cause us to be in violation of our total flow, to, um, volumes that we are allowed to discharge on the other side of the river? And then, yes, um, in order to pump over there, it sounds like you're pretty familiar with, uh, we have two big 50-horse pumps. So the energy costs during the summertime, um, do go up a little bit. Then in the wintertime, it's mostly gravity once we get it to the, uh, to the basin. So there's really minimal pumping cost. It's just a little more, um, hands-on operations to kind of keep an eye on things. The river limitations as far as our effluent quality are a little more stringent and require, um, increased, increased testing. So it kind of balances out in the long run as far as costs are associated, but, um, does that answer your question?
Yes, I was just a little concerned because if it's supposed to be a dry year again, we could be in trouble. So, uh, thank you for your information. I appreciate it. And that's all for me.
Thank you, uh, Julie. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
No questions.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. One question for Water Superintendent Jensen. We ran the Metropolitan Wells, uh, for a week or so, if we, during the high water. Were there any experienced, uh, native things happen when we did that?
Uh, with the wells themselves, no, at this time. And actually, we are still currently on the wells as the river got dirty again. So with that, yeah, there is no negative impact as of this point with, uh, operating the wells.
Thank you very much, Randy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. And I just had, uh, the, the Tesla update where the November shutdown and power tie-in to the main corporate yard. Will that affect any, um, any other parts of the city other than the, um, courtyard?
Actually, um, they are going to be shutting us down at our, at our pole, right there at 475 Hilltop, or the transformer, so they can, so they can isolate the main breaker box and do their, um, big, uh, hard tie-in to our system. So it shouldn't affect the power to any of the residents in the neighborhood.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Are there any, um, hands raised or, um, email questions?
No hands raised for the moment.
Uh, no emails.
Okay, then. Thank you very much, City Manager and staff. Now we're moving on to special call items. Per capita, item number one, per capita grant program from the State Department of Parks and Recreation, page 27 in our packets. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So, uh, the, uh, Voters of California proved Proposition 68, uh, which is known as the Park and Water Bond Act of 2018, uh, which created a number of grant programs, including a per capita, uh, grant program. Uh, so the program provides funding to cities and counties statewide for local park rehabilitation, creation, improvements on a per capita basis. Um, so the city of, uh, Riedel is eligible to receive just under $178,000 in funding. Um, and based upon the current median household income statistics, no local match, uh, would be required. So this is a, a different kind of grant in the sense that, uh, as a per capita, it's non-competitive. So, um, so it is, uh, uh, more of an allocation, uh, and, uh, a straight grant than a competitive one, which, uh, of course, as the council's aware, we have to, uh, uh, compete for the funds with other jurisdictions. Uh, so on November 19th, 2019, the City Council put a resolution authorizing, uh, the City Manager to go ahead and make application for this per capita grant program. And, um, and our deadline, uh, to submit the project application is going to be December 31st, 2021. Uh, so that's coming right up. Um, staff has looked at potential park, uh, projects in the city and determined that the improvements, uh, to the Ireland Street property owned by the city, um, are going to be the best fit for the program. So, uh, this property is a half-acre, unimproved lot between Painter and Center Streets, adjacent to Highway 101. Uh, the project site is recommended because it meets the, the grant's land tenure requirements and represents one. represents one of only a handful of properties within our inventories, as the council is aware, the city does not own very many properties in, in town. So I'm going to see if I can share the screen again and pull up a quick Google Maps. Hopefully people can see that. So obviously on your screen is the main center of Riedel with City Hall being right below the Riedel name. And then the school district, this large square in the center is mostly owned by the school district. And the property that we're talking about is, is adjacent to the school district on Ireland Street. So I know that many of the, all the council members already know exactly where this parcel is. But I'm just going through this for the, the benefit of the public. So this is the property here. It, you know, has not been developed since at least 1968 or nine, prior to the freeway coming in. If there were houses here, they were removed around that time to make way for the freeway. So this has essentially just been an open grass lot, approximately a little over half an acre in size that is available for, really, this type of development would be a good use of that. We looked at some of the other city properties and they're really not either large enough or centrally located enough to be of community benefit for this type of facility. So back on October 15th, councilmember Wilson requested, requested, and the council concurred that an agenda item be discussed, be placed on the agenda for the discussion of a potential dog park in Riedel. And that item was the result of a public comment on October 1st, where a submission of approximately 100 signatures was presented to the council requesting a permanent dedicated dog park within the community. And the motion was made and the council concurred that they wanted to see staff pursue a dog park at that point in time. So since then, staff has been working on various proposals and sources of funding to achieve the new proposed project. Ireland Street, again, continues to be really the lead contender site for this, just simply because of the city control over the property and ownership of the property. But in addition, the site at a half an acre is probably a little large for just simply a dog park. And so there's an opportunity here to have kind of a mixed-use facility that caters not just specifically to dog owners, but also to other recreational amenities. One of the things that over the years, you know, staff has been made aware of is related to the use of basketball facilities, particularly on school property after hours, that this district has not appreciated when folks have utilized school facilities for that. So in taking that into account, staff would be recommending the installation of the basketball half-court facility at this, at this point in time, if the council is, would, would agree to that. The reason a half-court is selected is the site is actually just slightly too small and too, there's too much of an elevation change on the property to install a full, a full-size court. And then it would obviously pretty dramatically shrink the, the dog park aspect of it. So as, as designed, I'm going to pull up another map and this was a part of your attachments to the to the agenda. Give me a second here while I figure out how to do this. Okay. So can you guys see that on this, on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. So under the, the proposal, and this is just a preliminary sketch of, of a potential arrangement for the, for the facility. And on the map, it's listed as Riedel Dog Park, but really, this is kind of a multi-use facility as it is proposed currently here. So the facility would include, on the left side of, of your screen, a large dog run area. This is the more hilly sloped portion leading up to the freeway overpass. And then to the, on the right side, a smaller dog area. So two separate areas for, for pets would include a secure leashing area, the basketball half-court, picnic tables, rain refuge, parking on the right, far right side, and then some additional landscaping, lighting and irrigation. So on the very far left, the corner would be left for beautification for a small landscaping parklet on, excuse me, on Painter Street, as well as some landscaping throughout the project area. So would this particular project fit into $178,000 grant? That is a good question. We think it stands a good chance of covering the vast majority of the cost of this project. One of the reasons for that is that we are continuing to pursue STIP funding through HCOG for sidewalk improvement projects that mostly includes Ireland Street. So this sidewalk reconfiguration and establishment of a new sidewalk on the edges of this park would be covered under a separate grant. So what we would be looking at for the dog park section is really the installation of of fencing, of landscaping, that sort of thing for, for the dog park facility. And then probably your main expense is going to be in your parking area and in your basketball, your half-court. So, so that is the overall design proposal. And obviously, if the council would like to amend the design or look at different amenities, then we certainly can, can do that. But with that, this is, you know, pretty exciting in that, you know, we're going to be able to build some new infrastructure at this site, at this underutilized site. That's a potential benefit for us. As we all know, Riedel has a high number of loose pets and animals in the community. It would be a great gathering place for folks to share information about animal care and security and that sort of thing. And then also give an opportunity for folks playing basketball to utilize the facility that is not school district property. So with that, I will go ahead and return it back to, to Mayor Garns.
Thank you, city manager. Well, I'm super excited, but I will just hold back and I will start with councilmember Carter.
Well, I'm going to mirror all of your excitement too. I, let's see, one, I will always endorse any and all parks in the city. So I'm very excited about that. Two, really nice when two grants line up like that, one for the sidewalk and one for the park. That's a little burst of serotonin that is welcome. I love it. I'm super on board. This would be a wonderful addition to our community. The only request I would make is about landscaping, and you're going to get sick of hearing me saying this. I would love it if it was like drought tolerant landscaping with little signage saying, this is drought tolerant landscaping. And that's really my only request. Was there going to be a porta potty or something? Bathroom facility? It's, I just, out of curiosity.
Yes. So there's no bathroom facility proposed for the site in?
Just for the dogs.
Yes, just for the dogs. You know, a human bathroom would easily eat up probably twice the amount of the grant.
Absolutely.
Also be a substantial ongoing expense.
100. Okay, that's what I figured. And I love that you just called it a human bathroom. Thank you.
A human, yeah, they're very, very expensive.
Yes. Okay. I was, I would be a little concerned if there were going to be a bathroom because of all that stuff. So, okay. That's it for me. Thank you. Exciting. Yay. Go team.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm for, I'm for this. This is, it looks like a good use of a piece of land that's not doing much anything now. And so it'll, it'll give some, the basketball thing's a nice addition to the dog park. And I guess, I guess part of the thing with the the dog park, I guess we give the, we trust our dog owners to be responsible, as they have been in the rest of the city, to help clean up just, you know, so it doesn't fall as a burden to the city that they get the little bags and pick up things that they don't want to leave behind. So all in all, I think it's a great idea. Let's move ahead.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. I'm totally for it, like all the other council members. Just one request for staff is that maybe they, we, the city send out mailers to people that are within 300 or 400 feet of the proposed project and let them know what's going on there. So we can see, we can gauge whether it's well received by the community or not. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And councilmember Woodall?
Yes. Looking at this and the sidewalk that goes alongside of it clear along Ireland, that was part of the sidewalk for the improvement, the HCOG, this section that was going to be improved by the sidewalk, was that all along Ireland? And then where the parking area would be with the, they would also consider that area for putting sidewalks into is, what is that? The end part of Center Street? Or just along Ireland?
So the, the, so I want, I want to make sure I'm really clear here. The, the STIP project has not officially been approved or funded. There will be a meeting coming up for the HCOG board to, to approve these allocations. But we're not necessarily guaranteed to receive that funding. I think we're in a pretty good position, but it has been recommended by the, the HCOG Technical Advisory Committee. And, and that project would extend the rest of the way down Ireland Street, as well as some improvements on Painter itself. And then
I'm sorry.
Yeah. And then as far as the, the parking lot there and the sidewalk there, I don't think that would be, that would not be a part of the STIP projects. That would be part of the concrete work related to, to this park. So if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. And we are going to put in irrigation. It says landscaping, lighting and irrigation.
Correct. So the, the idea there is, is to help with cleaning the facility and that, well, obviously only during the summer, keeping it, the grass green by placing some special netting on the ground to prevent grassroots from being disturbed and it just turning into kind of a big brown bare area. And so the idea is we're going to try to, to create a nice dog park with a lawn facility that can be heavily utilized without damaging the grass. And so during the summer months to, you know, obviously wash the detritus down or away, we would be, you know, watering it fairly regularly.
Okay. When I first looked at this, I was against the basketball court until I found out that the school no longer let the kids use it. And so I think this would be great to put that in there. It would give the kids something to do. So I'm for that. It looks great to me. If it was approved, I mean, there, at, at the time it was approved and we did it, we could do like, we could decide whether there would be certain times that would open or what times it might close in the evening to, to use. At that time, we could discuss some of that.
Uh, yeah, correct. So that's, you know, part of the benefit of it being, the property being under city controls. It's exclusive domain of the city council.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's a great project and I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Woodall. And well, everyone knows I feel about dogs and dog parks in parks. I'm for it. I'm excited about it. I think that the addition of the half-court basketball is, is excellent because we need to supply our youth with some place to go and, 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 you know, enjoy themselves and burn off some good energy. So, you know, so I am too for it. Are there any hands raised or emails regarding this topic?
Still no hands raised at this moment.
And there are no emails.
Is there then a motion? Let me see. Put some on the wrong page. A motion to it just says, it just kind of says, report and provide direction. So we seem to all be for it. Is that the direction?
We should be, yeah, let's, we should be clear. Would recommend that that the motion be that council provides direction to staff to proceed with the plans as outlined in the agenda packet and submit a grant application based upon those plans.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. Yes. Two motions. I will enthusiastically second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garns?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now to the discussion of disposal of firearms held in evidence by the police department. City manager? Page 32 in our packets. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Garns, members of the council. I'm going to turn this one over to Chief Connor.
Hey, Mayor Garns, members of the city council. As mentioned in the discussion on this item, the police department has been doing an evidence purge. We have evidence dating back to 1994. This includes approximately 200 firearms, 100, approximately 100 of which have some significant value. The remainder are severely rusted, not complete, and/or items that are illegal to possess in the state of California at this point in time. The question is what to do with these firearms? One would be to, one avenue would be to dispose of, of all of them. Another would be to take those that have value and auction them off either through an auction house or to FFL, Federal Firearms License holders in Humboldt County. Police Department believes that this is somewhat of a political issue. There are a fair number of people who believe that there are more than enough firearms in the community today and that the police department's role is not to provide more. So I wanted to give the community and the city council an opportunity to give direction on what should be done with these firearms. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief Connor. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, it's, it sounds like a what the right word to say is here. You lose if you do and you don't, you do if you don't. It's it's a hot, it can be as political, I guess, and as complicated as we want to make it. I just assume see that we get rid of them and not have the city tied to it in the event that somebody did something stupid with a firearm they bought by way of the city and, and just create a political hassle for us. So I'm, I like the idea. Just get rid of them. Period.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Wilson. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. As most of you know, I'm a, I'm a right to bear arms kind of guy and I probably have too many guns as if And I probably have too many guns as is, but I, I just bought one, another one about a month ago. And I, I like to own firearms. I like to go shooting. And the, the thing about, you know, transfers of weapons, of guns, is that it has to, number one, it has to go through the federal firearm licensed person like, like Fred Grunman, for instance. Grunman's also does things like sell guns on estate sales. And Fred keeps a, you know, a nominal amount for handling that. Also, there's a certain amount of paperwork that's required by the Department of Justice. And there's a 10 day waiting period before you can pick up any firearm after you purchase it or the DOJ to check you out and see if you've got any black marks against you. I think there's adequate protections to sell those that are sellable and destroy those that are not sellable. And that would be my recommendation. Thank you, Mayor Garnes.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember, where am I? Woodall?
I agree with Councilman Johnson. I was wondering though, I know Fred Grunman sells things on consignment. And then Chief, you were mentioning that the firearms be sold through silent auctions to the local firearms dealer in the county. Where do you think we would make the most money? Having them sold on consignment or going through the firearms dealers at a silent auction?
My initial thought on this was that we would want to give as many people an option to bid on them as possible, thereby incurring the, the most revenue to the city. I had not thought about trying to sell them on consignment. I basically wanted the sale to be handled by somebody else. They were probably, selling them on consignment would probably raise a bit more money. For example, Fred usually charges 20% on a consignment sale. I would estimate the wholesale value of these is probably closer to 50% than, than 80%. But to be honest, I haven't thought about a consignment. And I don't know what the other dealers in Humboldt County would, would say about that. There might be some consternation. Like everything during COVID, firearms right now are very hard to, to find and there is a high demand. So that might be a question for, that we might run by the city attorney.
Okay, well, I would go, I would go with whatever you think. I was, I just thought I'd mention that. I think, I think it would be great to have that money to use for our officers. I mean, we could have laptops in the cars that where they would have access to rims. I don't know if the office need new guns or, you know, but I just think there would be a lot that we could help our police department with, with having that extra money. And it would be a good place to put it. So I'm for it. For selling.
Are you, yeah, right. Was there anything else, Julie?
No.
I didn't want to move on if you were still.
Thank you. You know me.
Okay, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you. God, this is a fraught issue, I feel like. I could see selling them and, and, you know, using the money for something law enforcement related. But I could definitely also see just getting rid of them too. I kind of would be okay with either one. Yeah, I guess that's where I'm at. I, I could go either way.
All right, thank you. And, you know, I, I believe in the right to bear arms. That's not an issue for me. I was a gunner in the Navy. That was actually my, my, whatever you call it. That's what I was. I was a gunner's mate in the Navy. So I, I'm good, you know, with the idea of guns. I am not good with the idea of the city being in the business of selling guns. So I'm, I'm, I'm good with guns. Don't have a problem with guns. Don't think the city should be in the business of selling them. That's my position. I don't really need to go keep going on. That's just it. It's pretty what it is. So anyway, I would ask, are there any hands raised or any emails?
No hands raised at the moment.
There are no emails.
Thank you. So City Manager. There, basically we have two. We have, you know, sell or don't sell, dispose. I, I think we're, we're all on dispose. It's just basically the question is how do we dispose of them? So how is it, how do you want me to word this motion? You're on mute, Kyle.
Sorry about that.
Well, Deborah? Deborah, can I make a motion?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to make a, we dispose of these guns through being sold by silent auction to the firearm dealers in Humboldt County or in the manner that Chief would deem the better possibility.
Okay, I can accept that. Is that sufficient, City Manager?
So there is a, there is a motion on the floor. We, we'd need a second.
No, I was just making sure that that motion was.
I, I think that's sufficient direction, Jeff. Chime in if you don't believe so.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I would second that, Mayor Garnes.
We have a motion and a second. I think I would make a substitute motion that we dispose of the weapons without selling them. Is there a second?
Is that proper to do? We have a motion and a second.
Yes. So, so then you have a motion. Then you have the, the substitute motion. And then the substitute motion goes first. And then if it fails, then you go back to the original motion and that is how the motion sit works.
Is that correct?
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
I, I believe so.
I'm pretty clear on it, Julie. I wouldn't say it if I wasn't sure.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, either way, you're getting to the same end.
Right.
With the vote, so. Okay, so the, then the motion on, on the floor would be the substitute motion, which is to direct the chief of police to destroy the weapons.
I'll second that one, Carter.
We have a motion and a second. So roll call, please. Oh, yeah, we've done public, we've done public. Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Who's next?
Wilson?
I can't hear you.
Councilmember Wilson, she said.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
No.
Mayor Garnes?
Yes. Motion carries three two. Now we will move on to council reports and communications. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. I had a great vacation and, and I thank you all for covering for me. Thank you, Julie, for doing HCOG and briefing me on it. That's the good news. The bad, the, for the good news is I'm going elk hunting in about 10 days and will miss the next meeting. So that's my report.
We're muted.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, do you make elk sausage?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Do you make elk sausage?
Yes, I do.
Oh, keep my name on your list, please.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Councilmember Woodall?
No reports, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. I have a few reports. So I attended the REDEC meeting that was on October 25th. The program we heard was about AB 857, which to keep it very simple, just enables languages that would make it easier to establish a local public banking system in the state of California. I thought that was kind of an interesting idea. And have, they're looking for people to, you know, lobby for public banks and regional banks owned by the public. So if anybody is interested in that, I have the contact information for that guy. We also had, what was it? Two meetings of the Beautification, Walkability, and Pride Committee. I'm going to let Mayor Garnes go a little bit deeper into that. I'm just going to say what a pleasure it is to be in that group. And we've got such enthusiasm and joy and, and really appreciation of our city. And it is a pleasure to be in the company of members of the public who feel that way about Ria Del. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Wilson?
I don't believe I have anything to report.
Okay, thank you. And on the Walkability and Beautification Committee, we did meet. We met Zoom. And then Sunday, we met in person and we walked down to the gateway. And then we went down to the river where the walk, the walkway would be and kind of took a little walk down that backside of the, the pathway, you know, until it got too muddy and too slippery and dangerous. But, and there we are. All dressed up for Halloween.
Look at Deborah's Halloween costume.
I, I scared, Frank, you remember that. I scared Amanda, I think.
I used to know who it was.
I had to have a real scowl on my face so to fake her out. But anyway, the committee wants to recommend to, to the city council and staff to go forward, to move forward with the grant proposal for both the walkway, the Riverwalk portion, and also a separate grant application for the gateway as a smaller project, but still very much needed. And so I think we are going to, you know, pick up some other things as we go along, but we were tasked for kind of a quick turnaround to actually go look at it, go see what we thought, talk, talk about it, and then come back with the recommendation to staff because we only have a limited amount of time before the grant is due. So that is the recommendation. City manager from the committee, from the ad hoc committee to move forward with those two. Though, and I, that's, that's my, that's my report. And it, I agree though with Amanda that it, it was really great to have the enthusiasm. It's, it's really, really nice to see community members just like totally enthusiastic about improving the city. And I mean, it's really special. And so I'm, I'm really thankful and happy that I'm on that committee, on this committee because it's, it's, it's fun. So.
Deborah, I have a question.
Absolutely.
You, you're, you're saying that you're giving the recommendation. I thought it had to come back with you talking to us about what you were recommending and then as a council.
Well, that could. Yeah. We will put it on the agenda. I was just telling Kyle that that's what, where we were.
Yeah, there will, there will have to be, the council is the ultimate authority. So the, the committee has made the recommendation. Staff's going to review that, try to come up with a more specific proposal and attach costs to it. And then it will come back to the council for approval.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. So is there any, anything else anyone else wants to put out before we call for a motion to adjourn? Hearing nothing, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Johnson.
We have a motion, a second?
Second by Carter.
We have a motion and a second. Everyone have a good rest of your week and happy November. Don't forget to do your clocks, fall back and take a nap. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.